The regular meeting of the Bell Zoning Board of Adjustment from Arch 7, 2024 will now come to order. Clark Colerole.
Anguina, Giordano, Mafucci, Catalina, Manolvi here, Surianna, Valada, Bennett here, El Grecia.
Here.
And also for the record, I want to say that Brian Banda is here acting as zoning.
Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna do that, don't worry. That's gonna go on the record. We're gonna take care of that.
In role call.
Okay, because we gotta swear him in anyway. Okay? All right, everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Has notice of this meeting been given according to the sunshine law?
Certification of this meeting has been advertised according to the sunshine law.
Okay. Uh, I don't have any copy of any minutes. Do we have minutes for last month or no?
Yes, I do. I emailed everybody.
Did you get? You don't have a meeting. Do you have any? All right, we'll put that off till later. Uh, we have no applications for adjournment, I assume. Communications, I don't even know. I didn't look at my bills unless anybody else looked.
Don't hand it to questions.
All right, all right. We'll throw them around. Okay. We have no resolutions to memorialize, so we'll take up the first case on the agenda, which is a carryover from last month. CB 2023-07, 449, 451 Washington Avenue LLC. That's block 7, 906, lot 5. You may leave stand, but we have a question before we even start.
Okay.
And that is, well, actually, you know what? Announce yourself, so she has it on the.
Yes, Donald Rinaldi from D.B. Ozzy Rinaldi, and lovely appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, and I want to swear in Mr. Banda. Brian, if you could raise your right hand with regard to this matter, do you swear that whatever testimony you give shall be the truth?
I swear.
And Brian Banda, you're the assistant.
Acting zoning officer and Mr. Di Lorenzo, Captain.
Thank you. And you have certificates, from what I understand.
I have a certificate authorizing me to do zoning.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll get to this. Last month, if I remember correctly, and anybody tell me if I'm wrong, one of the things that came up was that we asked for a, uh, a, um, prints, a blueprints.
And a definition.
Well, that's the second thing. What I'm talking about, we asked for blueprints of what is upstairs.
Right, you wanted to know the number of.
No, I didn't want to know the number of nothing. I wanted blueprints. And you said you would provide them, and we never, I never got nothing. And according to my secretary, nothing was sent to her.
No, we didn't send, we got, we, I spoke with your secretary, we, I, we got them. We didn't get them, we got them about two weeks ago. We got blueprints and a, a rendering, but are you talking about the 10-day rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that comes into this too, exactly.
Well, except that, looking at the statute, okay, it does say, "Any maps and documents for which approval is sought at a hearing shall be on fire and available for public inspection." We are not seeking approval of the floor plans on the second and third floor. We're not seeking approval of that, okay?
But we requested that. You never sent it to us.
Well, but we have it here tonight. It also states that the applicant may produce other documents. Because this is on all the time at board meetings. They're called trial testimony documents. The applicant may produce other documents, records or testimony at the hearing to substantiate or clarify or supplement the previous testimony and plans. There is two things that you want. You want a rendering of the building to make it look good. We have that. It's a photograph.
That's simple. Go ahead.
Now, it was my understanding that you were concerned about the number of bedrooms on the second and third floor.
No, what we, and I specifically asked for blueprints of at least one of the two floors, because I assumed they were identical.
They're identical, we have.
And you could put that, when you have something, you say, "This is the second and third floor."
Correct.
But we never received anything.
But we're not, oh, okay, but we're not seeking approval.
Now, I know that. I know that.
Well, then, then I didn't meet the 10-day rule, if you want to put it.
Well, as for the 10-day rule, that's one thing. But the, but if it doesn't apply to the 10-day rule, if we asked for it, it would have been nice for you to send it to us.
I, I, I assume.
So that way, we could have reviewed it before we had the hearing tonight.
Okay. Judge, well, according to Judge, Mr. Chairman, um, as I said before, uh, well, it's my opinion that, and I don't, I'm not in front of you a lot, that to look at a picture shouldn't be something that you need to study ahead of time, but also.
Did you have the plans, yes or no?
Yes, we have plans. And all they show are the, yes, we have the plans.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion to the board? That we hear what Mr. Manolvi has to say. See, see what he's brought with him. After that, if we still have concerns or we're still not clear, then they gotta come back, but, but.
Well, I'm just, I just want to reiterate what the, what the chairman is saying, that we, we, we asked for these plans and they weren't made available to us. That's what I'm trying to articulate, and that's what he's trying to articulate. So I understand your position, counselor, but are we, are we, are we ready to move on?
Yes, but I didn't realize you, you needed them. I, I, I thought the crux of the argument is you wanted to know about the bedrooms on the second and third floor.
I, I remember clearly that the chairman stated that he wanted those plans so that we can make our assessments and we can make, you know, some judgments.
I apologize.
If to see if there are any.
I have no problem coming back.
If to see if there are any new variances, if any, uh.
Okay, I have no problem coming back.
Now, I know. Now, another thing that came up is your client was doing construction. And he got caught by one of our members.
Recently?
Yeah, recently, within the last month, we had our last meeting.
I, I don't think, I think he's clean, but I don't think he's, because he brought plans into front of Mr. Di Lorenzo. And that's what started this whole thing, and I, I don't think he was, well, what?
So, so, Mr. Counselor, February 17th, 12:04 PM.
Correct.
I was passing, I was traveling on, uh,
Washington Avenue.
Yeah, Washington Avenue towards the property, and there was a big giant, um, garbage truck parked in front of the facility.
Right.
Parked in front of this building. And I witnessed two gentlemen that obviously were the driver and the assistant of this truck. And they were moving construction debris from one of the, of the units into the garbage truck. All right, and then the garbage truck driver noticed that I was recording him. He approached me, and I told him who I was. And I asked him, "What are you, what are you doing here exactly?" And he said, "I'm removing construction debris from the property." So my question to you real quick, so that, so we can get, uh, so we have total clarity and transparency in this situation that occurred on February 17th at 12:04 PM.
Right.
Is your client engaged in demolition, the demolitioning of the property? Yes or no?
No. Now, he, he was cleaning the property out. I know he was cleaning it out. And I know he spoke to Mr. Di Lorenzo back, that, way back when, okay? But this, but I am gonna make a request, though, because obviously now you have firsthand knowledge and you're a witness. And as a witness, I don't think you can sit on the board and pass judgment on this.
We're not asking a question.
We're not passing judgment on cleanup. We, we just wanted clarification as to if there was something going on there that.
There, I mean, no, I mean, he was, he was, I am, and you, you could speak with Mr. Di Lorenzo. I mean, I've talked to him a number of occasions on this application. The whole thing started when he went into Mr. Di Lorenzo. He, if he wanted to do construction, he would have done construction. I am positive that he was told that he could clean it out, but he couldn't do anything because it had to be a, um, it has to be an apartment, I mean, a, um, a store. So he might have been taking out the kitchen or something like that, but I, and I have, you know.
All right, well, just a.
Not a question. Well, to you, actually.
Yes.
The question is, when you saw that, okay, we are not an enforcement agency.
No.
So why wouldn't you call the, the code office and report that? That, to me, I understand your point.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I actually took those steps. And I actually reported this to, um, public officials, huh?
Did everybody go?
Uh, well, at thi, at this point, it was left, it was, it was left up, up in the air as far as like what was taking place. But still, the fact is still is to be determined if he was demoing the property, but as his counselor is saying that he, you're stating no, right? Is that correct?
Uh, well, I, I wasn't there, so I don't know what happened.
Okay.
Okay, so I wasn't there, but I, I don't think there's anything wrong with, I mean, he was told he had to take the kitchen out and that it couldn't be, but, I mean, and I don't have him here tonight because he's, of, of a personal problem that he has, but, um, so I don't know what to say. Uh, it, but if you reported it to Mr. Di Lorenzo or whoever you reported.
Counselor, are you aware that Mr. Di Lorenzo is on sick leave?
No, not aware of that.
Okay, so now you've just been made aware of that, sir. So you guys have been around for like several weeks.
And his replacement is out tonight because of a, or not showing up tonight because of, from what I understand, a death in the family or a death, a funeral. So that's why we couldn't get a construction co-person and they have another person that, that, that is supposed to be filling in. But today was only his third day and he was not familiar with the plans. I wouldn't see him today. In fact, Mr. Surianna was with him.
Okay, first of all, I apologize. I, as I told you, I started as a prosecutor. My first case, when I was a defense attorney, was in municipal court in Bell with Judge Abramson. I defended my cousin and a bunch of guys. They were the new paws in a fight. That was the first time I was ever in a municipal court as a defense. I'm used to being a defense attorney and a prosecutor. My daughter was just sworn in as an AG prosecutor one day. Sometimes I'm a little, okay, I apologize, and, and I don't mean.
I know you're a well partner.
I, I, you people do an amazing job. You, you know, board members give up their time. So I just would like to present the testimony, and if you want us to come back, we will.
Now, Mr. Manolvi, why don't we, why don't we do this? I, I, I mean, it's up to, I previously said we should hear what you have, and then we're still not comfortable, you come back.
That's.
Make a decision. Do you want him, do you want Mr. Manolvi to come back, provide us with stuff and then come back, or just?
I'll leave it up to the board, but since he has a witness tonight, I have no problem with that witness giving test, what is he giving testimony after?
He's gonna, he's gonna talk about the floor plans on the second and third floor.
Okay.
And how many bedrooms there are. And he's gonna show you the rendering of what this will look at. It's a lot nicer than what it looks like now. Uh, and that's it. That's the only testimony I was gonna present.
Okay.
And again, just.
Yes, Mr. Bond.
Oh, I'm really fresh on memory. I think you had a question on what height the ceiling is, I could be.
The grades.
That's right, though. We want a Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Yes. And I, I made his assistant aware of that, but then this problem happens, uh, that he wasn't able to come tonight because of a, of death in the family or funeral.
By there, is Mr., is Mr. Banda willing to answer that question?
No, Mr. Banda is a zoning officer. He is not a construction code official.
He's not answering.
Am I correct, Mr. Banda?
You are correct.
So my thought is that if he can't, and we don't have anybody to answer, you should wait.
You, would you what?
You should not go forward.
Okay.
That's right.
Is that what everybody agrees? It's up to the, it's what, it's whatever anybody agrees, I, I leave it up to the board because I'm not a dictator.
Not, not for your, like, night, night, but normally, normally you had that question.
No, that was, that was a question last month, yeah.
So, Chairman, if you don't mind, what were the exact questions? Was it ceiling heights?
No, the exact question that came up was based upon the level of the ground and everything.
Right.
Would it be, if I'm not mistaken, a legal, a legal basement apartment? Because I know there has to be certain levels.
First level.
The grade, yeah, or grade, yes.
The property, yeah.
And, and I don't believe that's a zoning issue.
And it caused.
But anything that you approve would have to meet building code anyway, so if you approve it, and he can't meet building code, he can't do it. It falls apart on him, so.
But if we know that upfront.
You know, upfront makes it nicer, but.
Well, may I interject? If, I don't know if any of you remember, but the first night Mr. Di Lorenzo was here, either the first or second night, and that was asked.
Oh, Mr. Di Lorenzo was not here. Not that I remember.
Well, he was here because I spoke with him.
He was here. November, November 2nd, and the only comment I have was he said that the structure was built as eight apartments, and now you want 10.
Right.
That's what he said. I don't know if he was here, you know, on December 7th, and he was not here last.
He was here one time. That's my only.
Basically was asking a question.
But, but this question never came up, because this was brought up last month by Mr. Aguita, so I remember. But I, I thought, but that's how I remember.
But I do remember him saying, in response to someone's question.
Yes.
That he would have to comply, that if you approved it, he would have to do everything that he was told to do to comply with the ordinance. He didn't say that it was, I, I don't think it's illegal. In fact, I think you can have a basement apartment if you meet certain criteria, but. Again, come on, I have no problem coming back.
I think the question is, was, what, what was that criteria? Frank, could you tell us? Yes or no?
And if you met the criteria.
That's it. That's all I have.
Which would require an inspection of the property.
Okay, well, I have no problem. Again, you should just take the testimony and, you know, come back after.
I think, I think, I think we should just move forward, uh, just present your testimony, because that, one of the biggest things that I wanted to see with you was that if you were gonna fix, fix up the facade and make it look a little bit more appealing.
Right.
So we'll have to hear that testimony, even if we need to come back and revisit this.
Yeah, I don't care.
I, I think that, because, to, to be honestly, um, I, I, I definitely want to settle the whole thing that happened on February 17th. And if you can make your client aware of that, that next time I see him, I would like to question him.
I, I have, I, you should testify, I agree.
Because I did speak to, uh, several, a couple of people there, and I, I just want to get to the bottom of that, all right? But if, if we just move forward for the sake of just like listening to this, to this case and this, this application, so we could just, uh, you know, some, somehow just reach a decision and just make it happen at night.
Whatever the decision is, you've given us more than a fair hearing. I can't complain about your, your.
All right.
Okay, let's move forward.
All right, then we're gonna.
Jerry, before we move on, for the record, at the first meeting, I asked if it was a basement or a cellar, and we didn't get an answer that quick. And I haven't gotten an answer, certainly.
That, that was the issue that we were trying to find out about the grade.
But Mr. Banda just stated that if this project can't move forward, that that would meet, become evident in the future with Mr. Frank Di Lorenzo or any of his counterparts. Is that correct?
Yes.
To Banda?
They would have to meet all UCC standards, I understand.
So I think it's safe to say that we can move forward as a board?
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
So if there's, if there's fire suppression systems they have to put in, if there's egress windows or, or other things that they have to do, they have to meet that or they can't convert use.
They have to be pits. You want to know that.
Yeah.
All right.
They have to meet healing, ceiling heights.
Like, it's a, it's a, how much is above ground, how much is below ground, it's, it's not clear like that.
And, and the windows.
He has to think the pits.
Uh, and Mr. Counselor, just, just for the record, sir, in the past, in the past, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, these two units that you want to convert into apartments were used as apartments at some point in time.
Absolutely. They were using apartments over and over again.
Please, not legally, not legally.
No, not legally. No.
That's why you, you don't have inspection.
No, I understand.
We have.
And the ironic thing is.
And, and technically, not legally, and not having an egress that was necessary. Because we inspected the property today, being Mr. Surianna. Okay, we, are we gonna proceed?
Fine.
Okay, let's proceed. Okay. I'll call Mr. Guzzo back to the stand.
Good evening. Mr. Guzzo, if you could just state your name and say your last name for the record.
Sure. Anthony Guzzo, G.U.Z.Z.O.
At the last meeting, you were, you were sworn in, uh, you're still under oath, and you were sworn in as a licensed architect. I'm assuming everything is still good, your license is still in effect. Okay. If the board's okay, that's, we can move ahead with Mr. Guzzo.
Yeah, we can move ahead.
And if we have any new exhibits, we'll be starting at A7.
Okay. So I would like to enter this as a new exhibit. It's a hard drawing, A103, and I will mark this A7.
And this is intended to, we, we don't have this, right?
No, no, no.
And this is second, third floors?
This is the se, the first and second, technically the first and second floor is what that's.
I, I ask Mr. Guzzo just a few questions. Since the last meeting, did you go back out to the premises?
Yes.
And did you take measurements and make up?
Yes, we did. We.
And is that what this is?
That's what this, this, uh, is depicting. It's a floor plan of the first and second floor, depicting the unit breakdown on each of the two levels.
Okay, would you explain that to the court?
Sure. Again, uh, this document, A103, so first and second floor plans. Uh, just to give you an overview, our initial plan that we submitted, uh, which was our, our lower level basement plan, was, uh, just indicating two end units. Uh, the two floors above contain four units, so very similar in layout. Uh, but on that lower level, you'll see that just the two end units were occupied. Uh, in thi, in this case with the first and second floor, you're, you're seeing that these four equally spaced units, a little bit difference in depth because of the middle units are set back, uh, but depicting one bedroom units. Uh, so basically consisting of a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, living room, dining room. Uh, they are accessed from a, a center stair that comes up, and, and all the door access is there, and another stair that goes up to the second floor level also to provide access. Uh, so again, all access is from the front, uh, but we also, also have a rear, um, access or really fire escape because it's coming off the bedroom. It's providing an additional means of egress out to the rear, uh, via a metal stair and platform. Uh, so each unit is typically about, the end units are around 600 square feet, the middle units are around 500 square feet. So it really constitutes just very small one-bedroom units, uh, and I guess typical for that, that era and that's, and, and this size as far as a one-bedroom. So, uh, we just wanted to give you this, to give you an overview of what's happening above. I know we had those discussions and, and this was requested. So we went out there and documented, uh, you know, what's taking place in there. And it's, again, it's, after verifying, it's a very similar situation as we have down in the lower level. It was those inner units that we were a little bit unsure of, and confirming it's a very similar layout, just a little bit shorter. Uh, also, uh, we, um, created a front rendered elevation. We did go back and forth a couple of times with the owner uh, just to address what we're aesthetically doing on the outside, instead of, some, some of the conversation was there, but we were kind of putting it, uh, together. So I actually have another exhibit, uh, which we can render as A8, and I'll mark that. And it's our drawing, we call it RN101, dated 3/4/2024. Uh, and what we did is, uh, we tried to look at this and, uh, tried to come up with, just to kind of modernize the building as much as possible. Uh, you know, we have some steel, we have some existing brickwork, we have some different color paint, uh, that happens on the lower portions of the building. Um, so aesthetically, really just wanted to give you, give the board an overview of really what we kind of envisioned for some of the materials and treatments that were going on here. Uh, so what we started with is, uh, we kept the existing brick, just because that's kind of difficult to cover, and it, and it kind of returns back into, um, the middle units. Uh, so what we did is we were calling for like, uh, you know, we anticipate like a power wash on there. Uh, what we did is to really try to break some of that up with, um, a gray area in between the top and bottom windows. To, uh, you know, just to kind of give it just a little bit more modern look at on the two end pieces. And then what we did is we tried to just take, have a dark gray color scheme that would come through on the base, that kind of continues along the base uh, of the, the entire building, and then have, comes up through the railing work that's here and these overhangs that take place on the upper level roof and then on the intermediate balcony. So, so really just looking to try to clean up the appearance there, just get more of a cohesive look, because, uh, the existing is, 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 is the brick. But then you have a couple of different colored paints and you have some maintenance that really needs to take place. Uh, so, so we're proposing that view, and then again, looking to resurface that front paved area to just clean that up because we have some cracking, we have some wear that's going on, so, uh, just so we have kind of a consistent backdrop for the building itself. Uh, like a top coat of asphalt or, or whatever patching or paving that they need to do to correct any imperfections. Um, so, so again, just trying to give you a vision of what, uh, we would propose toward, you know, the building with, uh, you know, based on this approval, uh, looking to upgrade and renovate what's there.
Sir, uh, the, the, the brown to tan looking material, what, what is that? What type of material is that? Yes.
This is the existing brick.
What are you gonna do to, to make it look like that color?
Well, we're gonna power wash it. Um, I, I looked at the brick. It's a little bit, we couldn't get the, um, uh, right material because we did render this, so it is actually a 3D rendering instead of just a photo overlay. Uh, so it is a little bit darker. Uh, so we're looking, but we, we think the color scheme will still work really well, and we think if we clean up some of that existing brick, which has a, a varied browns in there from, from a little bit darker to this, to that tone, and also some lighter pieces in there. Uh, we feel that we'll get a very similar, um, visual or aesthetic for the building.
Okay, so basically you're saying it's gonna be per, pressure washed, but I don't think it's gonna get to that color right there, because right now I'm looking at red brick. So you're saying by what, pressure washer, pressure washing techniques, it's gonna get to that color right there?
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think so. I think that, you know, we'll clean it up. It'll probably take on a little bit darker appearance here.
So just for the record, it's not going to look like that right there?
Um, I would have to compare the two. I mean, as we, we rendered off of existing photos, so we did take that color brick and insert it in. And that's what we input in the panel. Sometimes the, the lighting effects appear, so again, it could be lighter, but I, I am in agreement with you because I feel it looks darker, uh, when I look at certain pictures that I do have.
Sir, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, uh, Mr. Guzzo, the, the gray center part right there, what is that? Is that just paint?
This piece?
No, no. By the windows, the, by the brown, the light.
Between the windows.
Between the windows.
Is that just gray paint, or what type of, uh, material right now is, is that what we're talking about right there?
Uh, we're talking like a mesh or stucco overlay on the center portion, just to really break up the materials and break up that brick look. Uh, we feel that was a good tie-in with, uh, the, the painting of the emulions for the windows, and we felt that that would kind of give us a little bit more modern theme throughout the building.
Okay, so, and I'm also assuming that the black part, the, the stairs and all that stuff right there just means to repaint it.
Uh, it's got to be cleaned up too, because it's kind of, uh, flaking off and things, so it'd be, it needs to be cleaned and painted.
All right, so let's talk about the white part right there. What type of material is that? Is that just white paint?
Yes, that would be paint, painting of the, uh, existing material that's on.
All right, so is it safe to say that you're just putting makeup on this property? Yes or no?
No, I, I think that, you know, aesthetically, I think we're, we're doing a major upgrade. I wouldn't say makeup. I would say, uh, we're not looking to completely reface the building, but I think that we are looking to do, um, maintenance and, and visual upgrades to it.
And also, just for the record, it's not gonna look that, that, that tan color.
It'll probably be, it's definitely gonna be a little bit darker. Um, I, I questioned it myself. We were trying to get a little bit darker, but, uh, trying to get visualization in our program, uh, like, trying to get the light coming from this direction, it kind of just lightens up that brick, but, you know. Uh, and in our images that we see, we see it darker on our computer and just, you know, sometimes the rendering comes out a little bit lighter.
All right.
You're an architect.
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with different forms of brick?
Yes, I am.
You realize that this project, this whole building, front, back, side, everything is old brick? What we call the old brick is like brick of a building that was knocked down and then being recycled this way? That is just, a building gets broke, knocked down, and they have bricks, they throw the, the bricks that are not damaged, in other words, not broken, into a truck. Person trucks it away, and then they use it.
I think they're called common brick.
Common brick, okay, thank you. Thank you. Common brick. And that's what this is. This is common brick. There's never, ever, with any power wash, you're gonna get something that looks like this. Never in a million years, and I've had a lot of properties that my parents owned, and I learned a lot in the business from my father, who was a builder. A power wash is never gonna get anything like this. Nothing in a million years. I thought you were gonna say that the yellow, or, or tan, whatever it is, was paint. You didn't even say that. I thought it was gonna be paint. Well, no matter what power wash you do, it's never gonna come out like that. That I can tell you right now.
And I, I'm also assuming from your experience, you already know that it's not gonna come out that color from power washing. And I, I'm also assuming from your experience, you already know that it's not gonna come out that color for power washing, so if you ever use that machinery and power wash.
We'll definitely have to go back and take a closer look at it.
No, no, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit perturbed as the rendering, because we asked for a facade change, and you came here with a makeup job, and that is never gonna look like that, because I don't care how many times you power wash the brick on this building, it's never gonna be that color right there. If I pass on Washington Avenue in a future moment, I expect that this building's gonna look like that, and you're telling me it's not gonna look like that, and that, and that's the question here.
May I ask a question of my witness?
Sure.
You're an architect.
Yes, I am.
If we painted the building, painted it, did whatever we had to do to it, can we make it look like that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. We're gonna make, if you want it to look like that, I agree, okay? If, and, and I spoke to my client, and he saw that, and he said to me, do you think, I said, you may have to paint it, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Mr. Valano.
Whatever has to be done with it.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, we're losing track from where we're here. We're here, the legality of those two units, that's it, and I have to decorate.
Well, that's part of the other thing.
We're not, we're not.
Well, they're preventing that, they're presenting that.
No, I, I did, I, you know, I respectfully disagree, I mean, that was not our conversation last time. We did go back to an approach, and it, and I'm, I'm just being completely honest with you, these were some of our conversations. We said, do we paint the brick that's there, or do we try to maintain it? I'll tell you the reason why I maintained it, I didn't, and I do, I've been an architect for a while, second generation, so I've been around it my whole life. As far as the brick is familiar, I didn't look as close at it, and maybe I should have, and maybe I would have a different opinion, but we were just trying to maintain the different textures there to really set off those pieces. So, I did not take the approach that this is the cheaper way to go, and we're gonna get, you know, a great result out of it, it's an older building, but again, based on what I assumed our conversations were last time, it was some of the things that we were saying, I, I feel that we went back and we did that, and, and I think we did more than what, some of the things that we discussed, so if we wanna critique this, that's fair, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I, I, you know, if we can take further steps and make it look as you envision it or as we're showing it, you know, I'm all for that, it was just, we were just trying to take steps to make some educated aesthetic design, a design here where we're mixing materials, or mixing some colors, and the building looks a little bit more cohesive than it does now, because it's really a mixed match of the way that they painted things, and it's a little bit in disrepair in some areas, and we feel that we wanna just try to treat this and bring this back together.
Now, is there any other testimony?
Yeah, would it be possible, Mr. Guzzo, to do a section of the brick so that the board can actually go out there and see what it'll look like in real life? I mean, is it possible to power wash part of the brick and paint it and do whatever, and then have the board come out and take a look at it? Is that something that can be done?
I've never done it before.
But it can be done, right, you can power wash part of the brick, put stucco on it, and then have the board come out if they have. That can be done, correct?
Can be done, yeah.
Okay. That's all, nothing more.
Yeah, Mr. Sariano's got one.
Mr. Guzzo, you stated that you're gonna repave the front surface, will that be striped? Parking stripes?
Um, I believe, I believe it is now, and we were just really looking to replicate what's happening there.
I don't think we said paint.
No, no, he said he's gonna resurface.
Resurface.
Make difference.
Okay. No, I know, I was shooting for the higher. And you have six cars, that's a good department. Just out of curiosity, will the sides of the, what will the sides of the building look like, side and rear? Will they be improved at all, or?
Um, I, I would say, we, we didn't really look at that closely because we're really just sort of tackling the front, but if there's some painting or maintenance things, we would redo the whole building as we were there, so if there is some sandblasting or scraping of some of the existing surfaces in paint that's there, that we would also do that.
Also, there's something else wrong with this rendering. On the left, there is no wall like that at the left, there is a rock, there is a, an alley, a small alley, and that's where he's putting the garbage cans right now. Matter of fact, we were there today, me and Mr. Sariano, we saw where the garbage cans were, and there is a space between that building and the next building, and it's not, it's an alleyway, right? It's not like you're rendering on here, there's a wall there, that is flat against a wall. Now, there's one other thing, the, well, I don't wanna go ahead of myself because the public may ask questions, but after you're done, I would like to see, or, or give it to us, because I'm not Superman, I don't have telescope vision, I would like to see the, the original presentation you gave that's underneath there of the second and third floor, so I can see it closer, and everybody else can see it closer. Yes, Mr. Valano?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Are we ever gonna discuss the legality of the two units, or we're gonna talk about color?
That's what we're asking Frankie to help us with, but.
Well, okay.
Because that's what we're here for.
If we're talking about color, then I say we turn the weight on Frankie, I don't need to talk about color.
But since he's, he's given testimony, I would like to see that, that other penny that he put on already.
If we don't decide the building is illegal, it's a moot point.
Okay, whatever you just wanna do.
Well, I didn't.
No, no, but, but Ryan is not.
Just for the record, Mr. Vonda stated that even if we do do move forward, it could still be stopped, because even if it doesn't meet the code.
I don't do nothing unless I get all the answers.
In testimony.
In testimony, exactly as Mr. Valano, Mr. Valano, who has been on this board for over 30 years, and I can tell you, I don't wanna hear anything unless I hear it in here. I don't leave nothing to anybody else.
It's documented over there.
Huh?
And it's documented over there.
Yes, and it's documented over there, I thank you very much, Mr. Valano. I agree with you 1,000%.
Scary, but okay.
Alright, do you wanna make, but I still would like to see that other thing.
I do have some, I, I did bring some extra copies, I, I think I have four additional copies each.
I'll push it off for next month.
If, if that's something you would like.
Yes, then you'll send us copies?
I have, I have it here, my extra copies.
Oh, yeah, you can give it to us and we'll adjourn to next month.
I, I will, I can submit, I think it's 16 sets that you need.
But is there any more testimony he wants, wanting him to give today?
No.
Alright, now, before we adjourn.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure one thing, that we all agree that if we approve these units, right, well, it's window wells that must be photographed for.
I, I agree with you absolutely.
That's fire code, yeah.
Yeah, that's fire code. What do we need before the next meeting so they know? They're gonna hand out?
I think we should go right back to the beginning of this conversation, and you, you promised us the last time that you were gonna give us the, the plan.
I'll get the 16 copies and everything.
Alright. I want this fixed up to actually mean something right here, I just don't want a lipstick job because it's never gonna look like that, my brother, so I'm just saying that, I'm putting that on notice right now. I don't care how many times you sandblast that right there, it's never gonna get to that color unless you use some type of the material. So I'm just saying that, I'm putting that out there, also, we need to know about these grades, because that, that, that's where we left off.
Also, can we see about the parking?
Yeah, the parking's also an issue here.
I think, I think the last meeting, we established, we're not, we cannot use that alley.
Yes, you spoke about that.
Right, right.
And I can confirm that based on my.
The only, the only part is what we see.
Yes, yes, I agree with you, Mr. Valano.
We all agree with that?
I agree with you.
There are, there are seven spaces, but one of them is in the driveway, so without that space, there's six.
You're talking about in the front, not on the side of the building?
There's no parking in the back.
Yes, I agree, you could fit a seven.
There are six spaces, that's it.
So, I would, for your sake, I would desert that in the joint, so everybody knows.
The six spaces, okay.
Yes.
We're here, just, we're here for the two units down below, whatever you wanna call it, we're here for excitement approval, and the variance for the parking, those three are what we're. That was the problem.
Thank you.
But before we adjourn or, or carry this over next month, because he gave testimony, and he may not, I don't know if you're bringing it back next month.
Yeah, he'll be here.
Okay, but I have to ask if any member of the public, because of the testimony he gave tonight, has any questions concerning the testimony he's given tonight?
Okay.
That would only be profit. Mr. Sheldon, come on up, give your name and address, please.
Michael Sheldon, 47 Flood Street. I apologize in advance if this is, this question's already been asked, this case has been.
No, this is only based on our questions tonight, on the testimony tonight.
If, if the board should move to grant 10 units, does this building have to be made ATA compliant?
Well, that's another question that would have to come up with, with our construction code official, whoever's, whoever's doing that next month, and Mr. Banda is a zoning official, not a construction code official.
Yeah, another reason why Mr. De Lorenzo's presence here is vital.
Or his, or his substitute.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions by members of the public? None, then.
To make a motion to Cali at the next meeting?
The next meeting, it'll be the first on the agenda as usual, until we finally get this over with.
You're waiving, you're waiving all time.
Okay.
So, just to be.
Second motion, you made a motion, you seconded.
So, you want 16 copies of the exhibits?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and is he coming back next month also?
Yes.
If he did, yes.
Okay, good, alright. Clerk Colerole, motion was made by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Sariano to carry this to the next meeting, and there will be no further notices either in the mail or, or, or in the newspaper, yeah.
Anguila?
Yes.
Gudana?
Yes.
Chapucci?
Yes.
Catalina?
Yes.
Rinaldi? Sariano?
Yes.
Valano? Yes. Bennett? Yes. Delgertia?
Yes.
Before we, I have minutes, I have minutes.
You have a minute.
I did it, but, the motion to approve on the minutes for, for February 1st.
I'll second that motion. A motion made by Mr. Valano, seconded by Mr. Agüita, clerk Colerole.
Anguila?
Yes.
Gudana?
Yes.
Chapucci?
Yes.
Catalina? Rinaldi? Yes. Sariano? Valano? Yes. Bennett? Yes. Delgertia?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Valano, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, by Ms. Bennett, clerk Colerole.
All, all in favor?
Aye.